Sorry, I always feel so self-conscious doing that. Karen, do we have attendance? President's remarks. So the first item on the agenda you might have noticed says President's remarks. And I don't have much to say other than that I can't believe it's been a year. Is that possible? How has it gone by so quickly? I feel like we were, the four of us, were newer, were just campaigning and just joining you all and it's flown by. But thank you for all the support you've given me as I learned this role over the past year. I really appreciate it. And I feel like we've really learned a lot from each other, especially with our retreat earlier in the year. And later in the agenda, we'll talk about the schedule for this year. So just thank you all for being you and having such interesting perspectives that contribute to such a cool hole. So it is now time for us to elect Board Officers. And this is a roll call vote, so for everyone that we do, Karen will kind of walk us through it. So we must begin with President. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Jamie Vanderbrook as President.
Second.
And Karen, will you? Are there any other nominations? Okay.
Okay. The Green?
Yes.
Jan Barney Newman?
With pleasure.
Colleen Sherman?
Please.
Lynn Song?
Yes.
Ed Surival?
How do I beat that? With enthusiasm.
Jamie Vanderbrook?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Vice President. I'd like to nominate Lynn Song.
I second.
Any other nominations? Karen, could you?
The Green?
Yes.
Jan Barney Newman?
Yes.
Colleen Sherman?
With gusto.
Lynn Song?
Yes, thank you.
Ed Surival?
Yo.
Jamie Vanderbrook?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay. Treasurer?
I nominate Jim Leha.
I'll second.
Great. Other nominations? Third time's the charm.
Yes.
Jan Barney Newman?
Yes.
Colleen Sherman?
Yes.
Lynn Song?
Yes.
Ed Surival?
Yes, yes.
Jamie Vanderbrook?
Yes. Okay, and finally that takes us to Secretary.
Are you ready? I have a nomination.
My goodness, it looks written out.
It's written out. Be patient. Two pages. I'd like to take, I somehow think I write better than I speak, but you can decide that yourselves. I'd like to take a little time to give the background to my nomination of Ed Surival for Secretary for the Ann Arbor District Library Board. Over 20 years ago, prior to the separation of the library from the Ann Arbor Public Schools, a committee was formed to consider the separation and establishment of a standalone district library that would serve all the counties included in the Ann Arbor Public School District. The committee that was formed included representatives of the schools and the Friends of the Library. Robert Potts from the school system and Don Axon from the Friends are names that I recall on that committee. I was an ex-officio member of the committee as representative of the Ladies Library Association. At that time, the active Friends of the Library worked to assure that the new district library would have supportive funds from the district to be served. And the two mil allocation of taxes gathered from various counties was assured. State regulations required that seven members of, that a seven-member board to govern the library be elected by the community. Three candidates proposed from the school board, three from city institutions, and one by a consensus of the other six. Ann Arbor citizens, including Bill Martin, urged Ed Surival to be a candidate. There was a great interest in the issue and many candidates running to be trustees of the Ann Arbor District Library. Ed was a natural selection and has remained so for many reasons. One, he was at that time a member of the Library of Michigan Foundation, a fundraiser for the Library of Michigan, a central supplier of public library services throughout public libraries in the state. The Ann Arbor District Library was also to be a recipient of those funds. He was appointed twice for the mayor to serve on the Ann Arbor Planning Commission and has spent a three-year term on the Ann Arbor DDA Board. Governor Granholm appointed him to the Michigan Historical Commission. He's an active member and supporter of both the American Library Association and the Michigan Library Association and was named Trustee of the Year by the Michigan Library Association. He's a member of the University of Michigan Library Leadership Council, a primary supporter of the U of M Libraries, as well as being on the Board of Governors of the Clements Library. As a member of the National Grodier Club, a group of supporters of the printed word and a nationally known collector of rare books, Ed has been an important voice on the AADL Board. He was appointed to serve on the Michigan History Center in Lansing and a member in a number of local institutions, including the University Musical Society for two terms and the Carytown Concert House for 30 years. Second page. Fortunately, Ed was on the AADL Board when circumstances required appointing a director to replace Marianne Odell. Ed's recognition of the talent and advocacy of the promotion of the then- youth librarian to fill that post rather than staging a national surge and his continued support of Josie Parker has been important through the years of her directorship. He's been elected and re-elected for four-year terms over two decades since 1996. And with the exception of the year he traded two years of his term to Prue Rosenthal, who faced running for an abbreviated term when she was appointed to replace a resigned trustee. As a resident of Ann Arbor Township, he represents voices of the constituents in the district who are not Ann Arbor residents. Though his failing eyesight leaves him unable to, who, leaves him unable to see across the room and causes him to rest his eyes at meetings, his cogent comments on issues discussed reveal that he probably hears better with his eyes closed. In fact, in my view, he often opens them to make some of the most helpful contributions to the issues discussed. In his last year of more than two decades as trustee, I hope he can continue in the office of Secretary to the organization that can still benefit from his knowledge and years of experience. That is my nomination.
I second.
Thank you so much, Jan. Other nominations? Karen?
Yes.
Jan Barney Newman?
Yes.
Yes.
Lynn Song?
Yes.
Ed Surival?
With embarrassment. But thank you, Jan.
Yes. Okay. Sorry, Megan. You had her run back to sleep while we were. Leave it up here. So we must now, those of us who have been elected, how do we handle this, Jim's absence this evening? Will we just do it next time? Okay.
We will.
Okay, great. So we must, we must do a little statement here. And I think the way it was done in my small years of experience is that we read it simultaneously. Is that correct? Right, are you all ready? All right. Okay, one, two, three. I, Jamie Vanderbrook, do solemnly swear that I will abide by the bylaws, rules, and regulations of my office as to the best of my ability.
Would you like me to read it?
I...
How about I read it for Ed?
You read it for me.
Yeah, you agree. I, Edward Surival, do solemnly swear that I will abide by the bylaws, rules, and regulations of my office as to the best of my ability.
Perfect. It's like you had a little civil marriage over there. Okay, perfect. Well, thank you all very much. And Jan, thank you so much for what you just read. That was really touching.
There's a lot, otherwise I would have just been able to say it, but too many, too many credits. I couldn't remember them all.
Yes. Okay, so we must now, yes, so we must move on to the approval of the agenda? Okay. So is there a motion to approve it? As it stands? Okay.
Second.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, how about the consent agenda?
They'll move.
For.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. Finally, we're to citizens' comments, so if you've signed up, it's finally your turn to talk. Okay. All right, well, if you change your mind, there's another opportunity at the end. While we move on now to Bill Cooper for financial reports.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Congratulations to the officers that have been re-elected to their positions. You have my report in front of you. Our tax receipts so far, as of the end of December 31st, we've collected $15,115,223, or 96.9% of our budgeted tax receipts for the year. And we are currently, our budget year-to-date, we are under budget by $886,238. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
That, not having collected more than 96%, I presume comes because some of the townships don't have a due date until February?
Yes, that's correct. We have, they, we collect throughout the year. Some of them we won't get until like April or May.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but by the end, just like last year, by the end, we'll probably actually collect more than what we estimated.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that brings us to committee reports. The only one on the agenda is the Executive Committee. The Executive Committee met this evening and we mainly discussed the Epic MRA survey that we're going to discuss during our 3.3 time today. So I don't have anything besides that to report. Is there anything?
No.
All right, great. Great, so that brings us to Director's Report.
Thank you. My Director's Report this evening is not written. It's brief because I'm going to defer my time to Eli Niburger later when he talks about the library's migration and the launch of a new website, which are together, too, I think, are the most important things we've done in a million years. And that's why I want to take up that time. I do, however, want to do two things. I want to acknowledge recently the announcement that Lance Warner, who is the Director of the Kent District Library, was named Librarian of the Year by Library Journal. And this is the first time a librarian from Michigan has been named Librarian of the Year. So I want to congratulate him publicly from here, as well as over here. So I think it's supportive, supportive for Michigan.
Very cool.
Very cool. He's a real go-getter and I think it's fitting.
What is this, where is this located?
Lance Warner, the Director of Kent District Library. It's the county where Grand Rapids is located. So it surrounds Grand Rapids, the city. They have, the city has its own library and the county. He manages the county.
Do they have branches?
They do.
They have, okay.
They do. Yes, they do.
They have a reputation for being very forward-thinking as well, I think.
The other thing I want to do is acknowledge by name some people. I'm going to do this knowing that I'll leave people off, but I'm going to try to do it. I want to first acknowledge Eli's leadership and management of his migration and the design and launch of the website. It would not have been possible without him and there's not a person who works here who wouldn't say that. So I want to make sure I say that myself. I also want to acknowledge that the group of people who spent literally three or four days here, who probably didn't go home, and I'm going to try, and if I miss, you'll tell me, Eli, Hip DeGraff, Eric Kloster, Ryan Eby, Troy Leonard, Eli Modell. These five gentlemen were here for almost four solid days and making sure that this happened and it happened smoothly. And it was, from the outside looking in, very, very smooth. They aren't telling us where it was run. So we're proud of them. In addition to them, were an entire IT department here, a lot of people who work on the public side across desks since that launch have dealt directly with the questions and the concerns and the wishes and the laments that come with something like that, directly from the public. And they've done it with grace and they've done it with generosity, which is how we try so hard to do what we do. And I want to commend them publicly. This took everyone to bring it totally off. Or someone carried more. It took everyone, managers, supervisors, everyone. And I just, as the Director of this library, frankly, I've never had a proud moment. And I just want to be able to say that. And that's my Director.
That's really great. Love it.
And Eli's going to wow you later, so great.
So that brings us to Goal 3.3, our monthly discussion of this topic. And today, what I have for you is just that we finally have a final draft of the Epic MRA survey, which you might have noticed was in your ephemera packet. I had a very nice conversation with John Kavanaugh on the phone. It must have been just before Christmas. The holiday like really makes me really confused about what happened when. But he was very diligent in taking our feedback. He had a long conversation with Josie and he watched our video. So thank you for making the video because he watched our conversation verbatim. So I really feel like he understood, you know, the issues that we brought up. So this new draft reflects especially all of our comments about how some of the questions were, you know, on the longer side and we started to worry about people's flagging enthusiasm for the survey, as well as some of the other points that we brought up. So if you've had a chance to take a look at this new survey, what are your comments? What needs to be polished before it goes out the door?
So I read, I read it and I didn't have the before and after side by side. So I wasn't sure exactly what the befores and afters were. And rather than go through, in fact, I looked up our minutes and I looked at what Karen's record. I didn't go back to the video, I almost did, but I thought, if you've talked about it in Executive Committee, can you tell me what you think about the before and after? I see it in one small question, but there's still a very long question about, it's the follow-up question, which gives the historical information on the process.
Yeah, so you're talking about question 16 at this point, I think, which used to be, I think, it was 20 in the numbering and then it was like 20A, B, and C.
Did we all have the copy of this?
It's in the ephemera packet.
Oh, I...
I'm sure we can procure one quickly.
I printed out my, I thought I would be saving somebody's work by printing out this for myself.
Oh, yes.
But that took all my energy.
So this is on page six of the draft, or of the entire packet, I think. I'm looking at the numbering correctly. So essentially, John explained to Josie and to me that what he was trying to do there was to kind of like capture exactly the tipping point someone would have to go from not supporting to supporting. So does giving them background information do the trick? Does giving them contextual information do the trick? And so that's why they were so long and like kind of only slightly varied. But he really took our feedback to heart and tried to make it more succinct. But still, I do think he really has this interest in, in asking a fairly long question to understand really where people are on the issue of a new downtown library.
Well, this is verbal, this is all on the front.
Correct. So yeah, so you have to like take it in as it's being read.
Bill repeat.
Okay.
I am okay with this.
I think it's very, I think, you know, he's an expert and did work very hard to address our comments. Victoria, you're frowning.
Just wondering why the, the last sentence of questions 15 and 16 is different. It both say if the, the Ann Arbor District Library Board placed a request before the voters in an upcoming election to increase the millage, to pay for the bonds that would fund such, and then it's different. One is that, it doesn't strike me as that's what he's trying to measure, the difference between construction activity and major improvements and expansion. So I guess I would ask him, I would expect, I would suggest asking him to review these two questions to see if he wants them to be more consistent in the language they're using to describe what seems to be the same thing.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to do that. Any other small things we see? We've had extended discussions about this, both leading up to it, seeing the draft. So it's not, I wasn't anticipating we would see a lot that we would want to change, but I just, you know, we spend a lot of time and attention getting to this point and I just want to make sure it's what we want it to be.
Josie? Josie, we were looking to put this out in...
It is February.
As soon.
And he'll come back to you with comprehensive report results in March for me.
It feels like we've done enough and it's time to go.
Yeah.
Good, but that's nice. I mean, you're so good at catching details that, you know, I mean, you've caught them before where someone did make a mistake, so, wow, we will mention that to him.
Remind me again how many interviews there have to be to be a significant sample.
Four hundred to five hundred.
And they'll have to make a lot more calls than that to get them.
That's how, that's what they do.
And their calls to landlines, if I recall correctly?
And cell phones.
And cell phones.
And we push them to up the quota of cell phones.
I'm doing some canvas, or calling for a political, the resistance group. And it's awfully hard to, I don't know how they determine what's a cellphone and what's a landline just by calling. Is there a way?
Generally, the exchange, at least locally, we know that 662, 663, 665, 668 are old, normally numbers in their landline exchanges. They can be changed, but rarely are. The other exchanges, especially those with a zero and a second number or a one and a second number, tend to be exchanges that weren't used and assigned to cell phones. If you look in the back of your phone book, you can figure it out. A lot of luck.
Phone book? You have the phone book?
Surely we must have one here, somewhere.
Do we know that? Probably.
I mean, we don't bother them anymore for the question.
Oh, my gosh.
Maybe someone's sitting on one somewhere to make them cheer and cry.
I have one, a five-year-old one, I wouldn't, a treasure.
It's vintage now.
Yes, so Josie rightly points out that we don't have to take a vote on this. So, okay. But I see Ed was about to say something? No? Okay. All right, so we can move on from this, but thank you for the feedback and I will deliver that. I'm getting lost here. Eli, it's your time to show us what you've done.
Yes.
That's been, I've gotten that question a lot. What have you done?
What have you done?
In various stages of.
Even though you got rid of the.
Have you really?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah, of course. Yes, absolutely. So, let's set the stage here. What does public service look like when you do it really well, right? If you do it really well, you hear nothing, right? You're always going to hear when you change public service from people who are very angry about it, no matter if it's a great change or if it's a terrible change or whatever. That's baseline, right? Then, if you do a good job, you don't hear anything else. If you do a really good job, you hear people telling you what a great job you did and how much they like it. And we've heard a lot of that. I mean, I think both Josie and I are blown away by the volume of positive response and pleasantly surprised by the low volume of negative response. I mean, I think calls for our heads are down probably forty, fifty percent this week. So that's, yeah, it's going, it's going very well. So let's talk about all this and give you some data and some where we're at and a bunch of different pieces of information. So what we have done now is we've moved on to the new website. And one of the ways I talked about this to the staff was that some people think of a new website like a new car, where you drive it off the lot and everything's perfect and it's all downhill from there, right? But it's really more like moving to a new house, where everything is utter chaos for six weeks, and then eventually you're cooking with a microwave and a hot plate, and then maybe you find some bowls, and then you work on from there and your life gradually retains some sort, and then you keep hanging stuff on the walls until eventually you have to move again, right? So we are definitely in the initial chaos sort of time, but things are actually working very well. We've had a big focus on core service in terms of my account, checkouts, renewals, requests, all that stuff. And as we've slowly added services back on, things are going great. So I want to talk about some of the things that we can see in the data, some of the things that we've seen in social media, and then some of the things we've seen directly via Contact Us from the website. Okay, so in the past two weeks, since we launched exactly two weeks ago today, we've had eighty-one thousand five hundred sixty-five visits to the website by forty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-one unique visitors, which when you consider that we basically have about sixty thousand active cardholders, that's a great number. It means, I mean, assuming that they're all cardholders, and they aren't, but assuming that they're all cardholders, in just two weeks, two-thirds of our users have visited the website. So this is very much on par with where we typically are with this, so this is going very well. We served five hundred and forty thousand page views during these two weeks, and out of those, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand were unique, meaning that a page wasn't served to anyone else, whether it's a catalog result, or my account page, or things that are custom to each other. To compare that, well, also during the same period of time, just looking at the catalog, eight hundred and twenty thousand searches already in the past two weeks, the average query time was five milliseconds, which means that's how long the search engine took to get them their results. Now, then it's got to be formatted for the web and then sent out over the internet, and who knows how long it's going to take to get to them. But the actual part of finding their search results is taking five milliseconds on average. And during that time, we served two point two million search results, and that was only point three milliseconds per average search result time. So the search engine is performing extremely quickly, we're very pleased with how that's performing. Similarly, as you see, one of the things that's new with this website is the ability, you type in the search box and you get suggestions. We've already served four point one million of those in the past two weeks, and those are coming up on average point six seven milliseconds. So again, those are super quick, they're turning around quickly, and we're continuing to improve what those are and how they're helpful to people. So to compare January twenty seventeen to January twenty eighteen, one thing is that we are using a new, the new version of our analytics package now is better at detecting bots and it's better at respecting people's privacy settings. We do not use Google Analytics, because Google Analytics requires every page load to be piped through the Google Plex, which is a violation of our privacy policy. If we have that information, we want to have it here in the building. So we use our own analytics package. Based on that package, we're able to see the average visit duration comparing January twenty seventeen to January twenty eighteen has gone up, which is good, means people are spending more time on the website. The bounce rate has gone down, which is good, means people, a bounce is when they visit one page and then they're gone, right? So when you're, the lower bounce rate, the better. Most websites in the industry would kill for this kind of a bounce rate, because it's extremely low. Most of your traffic, they hit one page and they never come back. Similarly, actions per visit is way up, meaning people are poking around, looking to see what they are. So that's just to compare twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen. This is a chart that shows visits over time, so you can see there are days when we're closed. The blue line is page views, the red line is visits. So this shows the data that you just saw on the previous slide. Visits are up slightly, page views are way up. People are poking around, trying things out, seeing what they can do, and we're getting some really great usage of the new website. One of the things that has changed the most is the way that text messaging is utilized. I told you a few months ago, one of the things we're doing with this new website is we're moving away from our custom short code, which is four AADL, very nice and marketable but expensive. It's something you rent, costs about sixteen thousand dollars a year to have a short code. There's now technology where we can use our regular voice number to accept text messages as well. So the phone number that you call, seven three four three two seven forty-two hundred to reach the library, you can now text that same number. So you can call or text, and that gets routed to our text messaging system. That costs us pennies each time, as opposed to, and there's no lease associated with it. So it's almost a sixteen thousand dollar savings right off the bat. We will be canceling the four AADL service as we get a little closer to summer game. A lot of users will save that to their contacts and might not have texted us, so we don't want to abandon it until we're able to get to summer game and start saying to people who text that, ah, this is the new number, change your contact, you can use this. But you can see here, the blue line is incoming texts, the green line is outgoing texts, so when we're responding to people. We had an immediate, on day one, uptake of new people texting us, mostly because now text is right in the top left corner, didn't used to be there. So now it's on the top corner of every page, says call, text, email, and the volume of text shot immediately up. It's a whole new surface that patrons are using to contact us, so that's going very well.
How's that going for staff, like to suddenly need to field questions via text?
I mean, the volume is, compared to what's happening at the desk, the volume is very manageable. I mean, this is, you can see on our peak day, there was twenty-five inbound messages. So when you spread that, the way that we have it works is that when a text message comes in, it goes out to the chat room that all the desks are on, the IRC channel. So everyone gets it, there's a couple people who get it in their pocket just in case nobody's there, there's very few of them that are after hours. Most of them come during library hours and then staffs, they call ball and say, I got that, and they can respond to them. That's provided through Twilio, which is outstanding service, they do a really great job.
It's a small question, Eli, but when people text, can they do attachments to the text?
No, we don't have that working yet. We, one person tried to send us a picture of their old sticker that they had a question back about, and we didn't get it. But there's a way it can be configured, it's not that we can't accept it through the interface, it's that we don't have an interface to view what comes in yet, that's the tricky part. Good question. All right, any questions about text messaging? Okay, so now we want to talk about what we've seen online and social media. Rich pulled all this together. One thing that was very interesting is that we saw a number of negative comments, and then when we went to go capture them, they'd be gone. So people were posting angry, and then they would calm down and try it out, and then they would delete. They wouldn't want to pay the price of being publicly critical of the library. So they would delete from their social media their slightly angry posts. So we've got a couple grumpy ones in here, but here's a couple of great ones. Massive props to everyone on the ADL's transition team, new site looks great so far, nice new website from ADL in twenty eighteen. Here's one from over the weekend while we were closed, salute to the ADL team who are presumably very much the opposite of resting this weekend. You should also see the current site if you haven't, while we were down over that weekend, we deployed the nineteen ninety-seven site again.
It was the best.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun, looks like Space Jam. Again, this falls under, when people say anything positive at all, that's a sign that it was really very well received. So here's an example of one that is, was not well received. ADL is still one of the best things in the deuce, that's Ann Arbor, but their website upgrade is a disaster, and it's Caesar doing his thumbs down, right? Not Caesar, what's his name, Augustineian, I don't remember. Yes. Yes, anyway, River Phoenix, so, Joaquin Phoenix, right? So we're sorry you, and so we responded.
Gladiator, right?
Yes, that's right. We're sorry you think so. Can you tell us what problems you're having? Feel free to email us at ask@adel.org, trying to get the conversation offline. Said, haven't had a request filled since early December, and I can't see where copies of books are at or when they are due. Also, search is hit and miss and can't specify author, title, subject, et cetera. So we responded, okay, thanks. Requests start flowing again this week, date due and advanced search are coming back to the catalog soon. In the meantime, you can use author colon or title colon et cetera at the beginning of your search. Thanks for your patience through this transition. Are you not entertained? Because he was still getting things from the library and they were still entertaining, so we threw that in there.
Did he respond?
He did not respond to, he liked it, that's his like.
Yeah.
So, yes, so he was happy with that response. Yes. It is true that he hadn't had a request filled since early December, because that's when we stopped filling requests. And we've just started last week doing that, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. Another good example, I love the new freezable requests from ADL, I can get over eager with all my requests and I get overwhelmed. Here's a Facebook post, wow, just used the mobile version of your new site for the first time, it's fantastic, thank you, ADL. And here's some emails, I love many features about the new website, especially the ability to click on the event calendar by date and see events, fantastic when I'm searching for opportunistic events. New webpage looks great, I love the freezable request option, new site looks great, much cleaner design and easier to parse, great work. This was our new year fresh start post. Poof is our internal word when we wave someone's fines. So we decided to surface that outside, we use a great gift from kids in the hall, and you can see that we boost this a little bit with Facebook, so we got sixteen thousand views of this, eight hundred and thirty-seven likes, sixty-four comments, sixty-nine shares, people went nuts with this. Everybody loved it. And, you know, we positioned it as it was a gift, it was really a technical constraint, we couldn't move those fines, so it was, yes, so it was absolutely a gift.
It's a gift of happiness.
People also like specifically commented about how good your social has been lately, so definitely congratulations to, you know, you and Rich and the team.
Rich is doing a great job with all that stuff. All right, so that's what you can see online, okay? Now let's talk about what we actually received directly ourselves. We received in the past two weeks, eight hundred and eighty-three direct Contact Us comments from the public. To compare that to the same two weeks in twenty seventeen, that's about five hundred and fifty more Contact Us's than we received during that same period. I looked at the response time, and out of those eight hundred and eighty-three, five hundred and twenty-four of them received a response the same day, many of them within an hour. To break those down, a hundred and seventy-four of them were website feedback, we'll get more into that in just a minute. But then from there, it's mostly routine library stuff that's just exacerbated by the new website. Like I can't get into my account, I don't know what my password is, I have fines or overdue, this, I can't find this thing in the catalog. I myself answered about three hundred and fifty of these eight hundred and eighty-three, and I was doing the ones that people had a problem I could fix, right? Like this is coming, or things like this. When there are people who just didn't like it, I passed it to Josie. Now Josie has done about twenty of those. To just to put that in perspective, we had a very small number of people who were like, how could you do this, it looks like a cemetery, that was one thing we heard. Another person said, isn't there enough Windows ten in my life? And it's like, we're really sorry. Okay.
Horrible.
Yeah, so.
You know, not, the ones I got, and this is important for you to hear, twenty, really not, twenty only.
That's amazing, look at how many.
That is phenomenal, that is really phenomenal. And those I deal with, and I have, and it's my job, and it's, when you know the big picture, twenty is a very, very good, or deal with, the people who truly, truly disgusted with it, for whatever reason.
Last time it was about two hundred.
Yes.
In the same period. So that's an order of magnitude less, so that's, that's pretty good. So to look at a couple of these, I pulled a couple individual words from all those Contact Us's to kind of give you a sense from them. One thing, one thing that was in particular is they said, who is the twenty-year-old non-library user you put in charge of this project? I was like, well, wrong and wrong, but that's okay. So, how many of them contained love? Forty-five. How many of them contained hate? Nine. How many of them contained great? Fifty. How many of them contained awful? Two. How many of them contained how? Two hundred and twenty-two. That's a great number for how. How many of them contained why? Only forty-six, as in why did you do this, what was wrong with the old one, those kinds of things. New, four hundred and seven, old, one hundred and eighty-two. Most of those are, on the old site, I could X. Am I now able to X?
This question.
Yep. Beautiful, two versus ugly, four, the fact that we got more than zero people saying the website was beautiful to our faces is a big success. So that's a, we're very pleased with that. All right, so here are the top issues that we heard about over and over again, most of which have now been resolved. Where is Melcat and where is ILL? Melcat, as we said, is coming back in the spring. We are going to start at the end of this month, the process of rejoining Melcat. Melcat tells us that's a three to four month process to recatalog your collection and get back up, so that will be as soon as possible. We've answered every one of those directly and let them know they'll be back up as soon as we can, and directed them to ILL, which was not interrupted, other than the three days that the website was down. Our ILL volume has been pretty huge through this process, from people who are accustomed to using that for other things. I want to search by author. The information architect really wanted us to try not having an author, title, subject dropdown, because it really isn't necessary from a technical perspective. However, as we found, and we knew it would be this way, it is extremely necessary from an emotional perspective, especially many people who essentially were taught how to search the catalog with a ruler on their knuckles, not by us, but by librarians in their past. Many of them, if they can't choose author, they are not able to search the catalog. So that was rolled out yesterday, so now you can choose from the dropdown, author, title, and subject, which makes it easier. Now there's a lot of tuning still left to go on the catalog search. We have a lot of ability to optimize that and get good results, still a ways to go with that, but this was the big thing that we kept hearing about. I want to know if something's renewable. This file under Things We Have Spoiled Our Patrons Into Expecting. There's not a library system that will tell you if an item is renewable without trying to renew it. You basically check the boxes and you say, try to renew this, and it tells you if it worked or not. From the old system, we had figured out a way to signal to patrons if an item was renewable without them needing to actually attempt a renewal, and they love that. We knew they would, and we tried to get this working before launch, but we were not successful. It's still not working, that the box that says renew will be grayed out when the item is not renewable. We have a lead on how to do it, but we're not quite there yet, so that one's coming. And everyone's been really very positive, as we said, don't worry, this is coming back. And it's mostly, I think, a big part of it is a lot of the other technology that's in people's lives has taught them that when something goes away, it's gone forever and there's nothing you can do about it, and tough luck. And we're giving, and here we are, government giving them the opposite experience of that, saying, don't worry, it's coming back. We know you love it and it's coming back, and we plan to bring it back. So that's happening. Where are my requests? So we didn't get the requests loaded until Friday of launch week, we wanted to be sure that we were getting them back in the right order. So we tested loading it several times, because we didn't want people's order to change around. So we did get those loaded by Friday of the first week, we started pulling them on Wednesday of last week, and we are now pulling them at all locations. The hold shelves are jam-packed at all locations. We have approximately at the moment, ten thousand outstanding holds to fill. So mallets, they have no room on their hold shelves, the downtown pull list is about eighty-seven hundred items at the moment, so they are working their way through that. Our patrons are so accustomed to immediately having the items that they request, that most patrons assumed that something was broken and they had made a mistake. What did I do wrong? What do I need to do to get my hold? The answer is, don't worry, it's coming, we're going to get caught up. And especially because, once we loaded the requests, then they couldn't renew their checked-out items if they were outstanding holds, but then there's copies on the shelves. And to them, they've never seen copies on the shelves and outstanding holds, because usually that doesn't generally happen. So that's just one, again, we've been explaining it one by one. A lot of these things are things that you can put in a blog post, and a blog post isn't going to make anybody who's angry happy, right? But when they email you and they get a personal reaction within minutes, telling them exactly what it is, waiving their fines, renewing their items, they made a fan for life. So it's much better to do, build those relationships, fix those issues, person to person, as opposed to putting up a big notice that says, we know, go away, right? Which is not the intent, right? So requests are flowing, it will take at least another week to get all caught up on those. Especially, the big problem at this point is space on the hold shelves. Where's the new stuff? We started getting new stuff, we started adding new stuff to the catalog on the eighth, it started showing up on the eleventh. We had a combination of some flu and some, all kinds of things going on the dev team, so we didn't get that out as quite as quickly as we hoped. But that is now working and new things are now showing up in the catalog. We're still working on fine tuning that. Our notice is working. Tomorrow, we will send out our first batch of date due reminders. And that is 28,000 date due reminders will go out tomorrow. Hopefully Gmail won't nuke us from orbit, because that's, that's the most likely thing when they see all these coming out. It's not so different scale from what we would normally had, and we have it all set up with our mail provider and things like that. But it was another one of those things we wanted to make sure we got right. So that's coming, starting tomorrow. We've been waiving everybody's fees as those have accrued as needed. And staff knows to do that, they've been going through all of those. What's up with Overdrive? Overdrive did not respond to our first attempt to get their service pointed at the new server. It was still pointed at the new server until today. So if patrons didn't have any changes to their library card, they could still use Overdrive. But if they had a new library card number or were a new patron, Overdrive wasn't working for them, because they didn't exist in the old system, right? Rather than shutting it off on the old system, we kept it working for the 80% of patrons who it was working for. Today, we finally heard back from Overdrive, they've pointed it at the new system. Overdrive's now working for everybody. This page is broken. So we love to hear that, it's very helpful. First of all, it helps us fix it. Second of all, we know someone was actually looking at that page. One thing is that the number of webpages on adl.org is approximately 360,000 webpages. So making sure that all of those are right, and that all of the things that used to work on the old website are coming close to working, there's still a long way to go with that. A lot of cleanup, still nodes that have weird code in them and things like that. We're working our way through it both by people letting us know, and also starting some automated cleanup projects to try to get things caught up behind the scenes. Those are the top issues that we've heard from. Any questions about any of these? All right. Whoops. Oh yes, okay, so here's, just before we started this meeting, we got a contact us from a patron. 6:55 PM. New site looks fantastic. I've only done basic stuff so far, but it's all been good. Well, we're glad he's done the basic stuff, because that's what's working. So this is outstanding feedback, I was delighted to see this. I'm like, I'm throwing that in the slide deck right now. And I forwarded that one along to Josie, so she doesn't have to deal only with the crab apples, right? Okay. So what's next? Here are the services that now we're going to be working on as we are continuing to cross off the sort of migration window stuff. This is the stuff we'll be working. Newsletter and annual report. The newsletter is broken, in that the new website, the module that we use to send the newsletter on the old website, does not exist on the new website. Nobody has made it for the new website. So we're kind of back to square one from an infrastructure perspective. We do have to get the annual report together, so it'll probably be that the annual report will be the first thing that we send out using a new emailing system, and then we'll resume with the, with the weekly newsletter from there. New downloads, we have some new downloads we want to make into the catalog, as well the downloads in the catalog, the direct ones are not yet working. That's something that's on the list for this week, I don't know if that got fixed today or not. Catalog search tuning is a big thing. We're starting to hear from people, the sorts of things that now they're past the author and title shock. We're hearing from them, I searched for this and this didn't come up, but I know you have it and why. That's worth its weight in gold. Helps us find out why that part of the search wasn't working right, allows us to tune that sort of thing. Custom notifications, so people can decide how often they get notified. At this point, we're starting with all the stock notifications, then we'll get to the custom notifications, including letting people get notifications via text and things like that as well. Custom alerts, so for example, when they suggest a title, being able to set an alert to say that they can get notified. These were all things that would have been lovely to make into the release, but we were focused on the core services and making sure that those work. Site search is not yet working. That hopefully should be next week, that's our big target for next week. Just today, we got event nodes working again today, so people, so the staff is able to start booking new events and editing new events. New facets is still coming. We don't have the language facet working again, right? There's a cataloging problem with that. The other thing is a fiction and nonfiction division, which seems so easy, is actually super hard. Because there's all kinds of fiction and nonfiction, and there's all kinds of nonfiction and fiction. For example, the Harry Potter cookbook is in nonfiction. Similarly, Better Call Saul's self-help book is in nonfiction. So there's a lot of things that wind up that way, that make it tricky, and boy, if we're going to say this is fiction or nonfiction, it better be right. So we're still working on that filter. Now, if you search for fiction, you get good results. You have a question coming?
I, I want to laugh so hard, and, and I don't, what, what are they?
What's the Harry Potter cookbook?
It's nonfiction.
Cookbooks are always nonfiction.
Yep, cookbooks are always nonfiction.
Cookbooks are always nonfiction. And Better Call Saul's self-help book.
It's a self-help book written by a fictional character.
Right. It's nonfiction though, right?
Right. But is it?
But is it?
Yeah. It's not written by a real person. Yeah, so.
We have the, we have the best job.
So that'll be coming. It's one of those things that really seems to users as, it's so simple. It's not so simple. So we're getting there. New metadata, we have some new metadata sources that will allow us to see better what things series go in. We have a wonderful partner called Fict Fact, that has some really great metadata for fiction. Fiction, metadata sources is a really interesting thing in the library business, because most libraries pay for their metadata from this one big so-called nonprofit. And that nonprofit gets their data from libraries uploading it. But you get credits for uploading the data, which means there's an incentive to be the first to upload it. Which means the quality of those records is awful. So increasingly, the main sources of data that are available to the library industry are getting really bad. So it's, we're looking for alternate sources to be able to improve our catalog metadata. So that'll be coming down the line as well. Series hold, once we have good series data, we want to enable that series hold in conjunction with the frozen holds feature. Frozen holds is working great so far. Patrons are figuring out when they can freeze and when they can unfreeze. Once it goes, once your copy goes in transit to you, meaning your copy is on its way to your hold shelf, it's too late to freeze it. And we've been explaining that as we go. And beyond. Any questions about new features? Yes?
This isn't a feature of the website per se, but in terms of what's next, where did, we, you have to rework the Summer Game site as well.
Oh yes. Summer Game is right now totally gone.
Yes.
We have all the data. The old site is still running inside the building, and we are using it for some things. But we will be completely rebuilding Summer Game for 2018. Everybody's points will be there. It'll still be the core things that people are really used to, codes, badges, adventures, all that kind of thing. But some of the things of the way that the shop works need to be changed. And we'll, we'll talk more about that as we get some better.
What's your sort of start timeframe for the Summer Game?
Oh, Summer Game always starts on the last day of school.
No, I mean the, the new development.
New development. We'll, we'll be having meetings again about it probably in late March. And then we'll be doing development in April and May. Because the goal is always to have that code deployed by the beginning of June, so we have some time to shake it out a little bit before Summer Game starts.
So I have a question for you about, I guess it's like, maybe I just don't want to make sure that this is right. But like, I've been avoiding sometimes like emailing you when I notice things, because I don't want to bother you. But what I'm hearing from you is that you want to hear from us when things are not what we expect.
Of course.
It will help you.
And we are now officially past the window of protect IT. You know, we've been telling us to staff, okay.
Okay.
Just, just let us know, let us know what you see.
Got it.
Yep. So we're always happy to hear that.
So for the five of you listening at home.
Eli, I've been doing them just through your regular contact me button, figuring that way it goes into your hopper that you can count.
Absolutely. Yeah, contact us is great, direct email's fine too, whatever you'd like, text.
We should try the texting. I tried the, where you can make your phone into your library card. But I like walked in the building at the moment with something, like everything had ground to a halt for a second.
Yes.
And I like thought, I'm just going to turn right back around. So I gotta try it again.
We had, well, you know, that's the other piece of this, is in the middle of all this, we had to move over our entire fiber infrastructure from the cities, from Comcast's fiber to the city's fiber. That happened Friday. And this is something, you proved this in a board meeting at the end of last year, that the city has built out a fiber network, and they wanted to move over this week. So that was, we got cut over to that on Friday, and part of that moment was when something got kicked out in the server room. And everything went down, that was the same day, the power went out at Pittsfield. Yeah, that was, that was a tough day. It was a tough day at the library.
But you survived.
Yes, we've survived, we're all still here. Same headcount in the IT department as before. Any questions about any of this? All right. So I just want to piggyback on Josie's thanks and thank a number of staff across the organization. Of course, the IT team, Glenn Kip, Troy Eby, Eric and Rochaine, Joe LeRong and Tom also worked all over the holiday weekend. We had to replace all the catalog stations. Well, we had to replace all the self-checks, we knew that. What we didn't know is that we would also have to replace 22 catalog stations. We found that out at midnight on Sunday. So we spent all day Monday replacing 22 catalog stations. Fortunately, we had the hardware on hand. We also didn't expect to have, that out of our 20 shiny new touchscreens, that 13 of them would be defective out of the box. So that was another adventure. That's why some places you still see a mouse, because we're waiting for the replacement touchscreens. So Joe LeRong and Tom did a particular good job working on that, as well as the circulation supervisors at each location. They've fielded a ton of calls, they've answered, the five of them together worked to answer the circulation problems. There were 350 of those that came in through contact us, as well as they're working with all of that, the hold shelves, and figuring out how to do that, and figuring out how to get caught up on that. Mike and Colin are our desk supervisors, and they've been helping make sure that the staff knows and everything that they need to know. And here's the big thing, the last time we did this, 12 years ago, the major training issue we had with the staff was, this is a mouse and this is how to use it. I'm not kidding. And this was the major issue. And everybody got through it and everybody did a great job. But for many staff, that was the first time that they had to use a mouse in their job, right?
You were in junior high school.
No, I was certainly not. I was married with children, thank you very much. So one of the things that had, one of the things that we didn't have to deal with at all this time was that skill gap or anxiety on the part of the staff. And the extent of training that happened for this was basically one, two-hour class and access to the server to play around. And this is the major tool that they use. And evergreen is not pretty on the staff's side. It, it is clunky. And they're learning how to use, work with all of that, and it's just been such an amazing effort from the desk staff, from the processing staff, fielding all these complaints across the desk, all these compliments across the desk, helping people do things, answering the same questions 15 times a day. It's been really great. So this would not have at all been possible without the amazing staff of this organization. And thanks to all of you for making it possible. That's it for me, any questions?
I feel I have just witnessed Eli's one-man show about how to launch a library website, including the credits where you thank everybody at the end of your one-man show. So thank you for putting on that excellent one-man show, and I want to applaud you, but I don't want to clap into my, my microphone.
Oh, hold on, Eli.
Wait, where are you going? We don't want to give you more accolades.
Do they turn off?
So, you know, when I went to the Traverwood Ranch and saw all the empty shelves, you know, I, I pointed it out to the children, and I said, you know, at one point, we actually had to find our own books. Not too long ago, in my lifetime. And they were, they were really surprising, and we talked about how we take a lot of the library services for granted. You know, we, we assume that every library functions like this wherever we go, that there are hold shelves that are already out. And I told them that we're really lucky to live in a community that, that really appreciates the library, has high standards for, for our services. And I, I kind of have to laugh about the panic mode that people kind of went into, when you realize just how essential these services are for our everyday lives, right? So I, I, I feel like it's a new year, new beginning. I'm so appreciative, this is, this is a great New Year's gift to, to everyone, so thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you for lunch on launch day, that was hugely successful, everybody was delighted.
Well, Glenn definitely sees the good in that idea, so.
Glad you like fried chicken.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, we are just so, so proud of what you have accomplished. I mean, you worked so long and so hard and brought so many people into it. I mean, not just the staff here, but like the great people that you work with to think through the site architecture and to do that so carefully, and then, I mean, I think your little point about like knowing whether you can renew something is really excellent, because I didn't even know, and I, I kind of feel like an insider, that I was spoiled for that, for, you know, because at, at my library that I work at, it doesn't tell you that. You don't know until the moment that you click it, whether it's going to go through or not. And I, I'm always a little irritated by that, and I didn't realize that it was because you spoiled us. So thank you for always spoiling us so well, and we're, I don't know, we couldn't be more grateful. The stream team, that's what you're saying exactly.
That's right.
All right, T, where are we? I'm totally lost in greatness. New business, oh gosh, okay. So Jim can't be here tonight, he has the flu, so we're all very grateful that he's not infecting us, but we're really sad to miss him. I'm sure he's watching at home, so hi, Jim. I, I hope that you're like not too feverish to, and can be paying attention as we go along. But you might remember that we, he suggested we might change some dates coming up. And the administration, Josie and her staff went back and we can't change any dates. There's so much that happens in this library that it wouldn't be possible to do the meetings on a consistent schedule. And we really felt like that's very important for a public meeting. It needs to be consistent, like it's always Monday or it's always Tuesday, so that people can know and come and... So the proposed dates that you see there are, are basically what you would expect to see. But with those dates that you see there, any issues? Because we need to, it's an item of action, we have to make a vote.
I move to approve the proposed 2018 meeting schedule.
Thank you.
Second.
Great, so, and we should do our discussion now. Yes, great. Sorry, Jim was also pointing out to me that I always do it backwards, and so we have to do the discussion after the motion. So any further discussion?
No, these, these dates look fine. I mean, our November one is early, and the January one is a day later because of Martin Luther King Day, right?
Right.
And is it important if one knows that there'll, for instance, if I know I'll be absent in February, is it important for you to know that, Karen?
It is, it is of course.
Okay, then I will not be here in February.
And I am not likely to be here in March.
There was something else I was going to say. Oh, right, retreat. You, I think it says that we usually have a retreat, but it's not very specific, so we should start to talk about when that could be, because we do usually have a retreat in this quarter of the year. Last year, did we have it in May?
It was later.
We had it later, but we had it in March the year before that.
So the epic MRA results come back in March, is that right?
Correct.
Should we look to April so that everyone will be here? It's, it will be gone in March, right?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah. We can try to pull some dates, available rooms together, availability together.
Well, we could always call site too.
Correct.
Yes, we do know how busy everyone is. And last year, we wanted to meet in the new Westgate, but it's not, hasn't been going anymore, so half the week.
It's still exciting though.
It's still exciting.
It's still exciting.
And new. April sounding like an okay possibility? I think we did, did we do, we did a weekday last time, do weekday again?
Yes.
Weekdays, okay. Okay. And I'm sure that Jim will also want to weigh in on that, but it doesn't have to be decided right now. But the board meetings, we do need to vote on those, yes.
So does Jim have to miss three meetings then?
I think maybe, I've talked with him a little bit about this, and I don't want to speak for him, but, you know, I just encouraged him to be here as much as he possibly can.
I know that there are times when he has to be out of town.
Right. So, you know, we talked about different ways to be present when you can't be physically present, like through reports or making lots of comments about the agenda as it's coming out, but...
We, we talked at one point about remote attendance at meetings where necessary, which my recollections, the school board has done that. Do we have any policy or any reasons we should or should not do that? All I can give you is the history, the bylaws, and Ed can, Ed can address it too.
We had an elected trustee who, prior to swearing in, requested to be tele-present during the summer because vacation was spent out of state. And we did not formally, as I recall, make a motion, but did not show any enthusiasm for three consecutive absences.
I think part of the, part of the reasoning on this is that, where do you decide how many people can be absent from the room for there to be a meeting? Is a, is someone who's not present able to vote? How does the public know who's at the meeting or not? The bylaws are not specific, it's allowing for remote attendance and voting, but it is specific to how many people have to be present for a quorum. So that's, what Ed's just said and what I know are how this board has handled it. So generally, it's discouraged.
My experience with, I'm sorry, but other boards, it, it's the same issue. Committee meetings, it's, it's okay, but for a formal board meeting where there's voting, it's usually not. I, I've never heard of it being done. There's probably examples where exceptions have been made, but I've never heard of it.
The bank board allowed absences.
But tell us, can you vote? When elected officials, it's just different.
I do think we gained something from being present in the room together.
I agree.
Discussion wise, and so, you know, I think that it would be challenging to replicate that, especially if you, if you think about one person calling in, that makes sense. But what if two of us were gone at the same night and then it started to get...
We're all seven of us.
Right.
Well, and then, yeah.
I mean, it's not a big board. There are only seven. And it does require for us to work and to live with each other, a relatively high level of attendance. And when we have meetings where there are, say, only five people in attendance, and we've had one once over the years when there were only four, you just wind up doing perfunctory business.
Right, yeah.
And it's not really possible to conduct a meaningful.
Right.
So I, and as I said, the school board is only, I can only think of one case in which that happened. Do the regents, who are also elected of the University of Michigan, allow?
I don't know.
Non-registered presence? I don't think so.
And I should probably add that in my discussion with Jim about this, he didn't ask for that at all. He, his request was that we just do Tuesdays or Wednesdays. And the reason we can't is because we now we televise. And the reason we can't is because we now, we televise these and so we're sort of locked into this space. So, you know, I think he was not interested in suggesting that, you know, be remotely present.
I think my difficulty with it is frankly, if there were an occasion when someone couldn't attend, I'd rather have them be able to attend. Uh, it does feel to me like a loss not to have people physically in the room.
Right.
But it feels like a loss not to have someone available at all as well. Um, but I think this conversation is probably as far as I wanna go with it. Yeah.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on the dates?
Yes.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, so now we must now move on to um approve the board budget and finance committee appointments. Um, this is something that, a discussion that Jim would have led. Um, as the treasurer is the chair of the finance committee and I know that he discussed with me his interest in continuing to work with Colleen and Victoria and that they, I believe are still interested in serving in that role.
Would you like me to make the motion?
Oh, yes, thank you.
For procedural purposes? Approval of board, I move to approve um, uh, the approval of board budget and finance committee appointments.
I second.
Thank you, Colleen.
I would love to continue on the finance committee. I enjoy it very much.
I'm very happy to remain as well.
Any other discussion on this issue? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Alright, the last thing on our agenda, except for citizens' comments, is to vote for another closed session for our next meeting for the discussion of real estate. Be good.
I move to vote for it.
Thank you.
I hope it's okay that I'm just doing it. Vote for closed session at the February 19th board meeting so we can discuss real estate.
I second.
Thank you both very much. Any discussion? Okay.
Second, she's not gonna be here.
Oh, well, she can still-
I think I'm here now.
She is here now. All those in favor?
Oh, wait.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Just when I have like my rhythm going.
Victoria Green?
Yes.
Dan Bernie Newman?
Yes.
Colleen Sherman?
Aye.
Sun Tsong?
Yes.
Ed Zeroville?
Yes.
Amy Vanover?
Yes. Okay, that brings us, did anyone sign up?
Yes, I have someone named Dave.
Welcome, Dave. Oh, sorry, have you not commented before? I should give you some instructions. So, um, there's the podium and usually people say where they live. Oh, you have three minutes.
Cool. Hi, I'm Dave. Uh, I live on the west side of Ann Arbor. Um, I'm active in the tech privacy scene. I care especially about it in relation uh to intellectual freedom. Uh, after the last board meeting, I read a late December announcement about a new collaborative program between the Library Freedom Project and New York University. It's known as the Library Freedom Institute. Um, I quote from the Library Freedom Project's website, "The Library Freedom Institute, LFI, is a privacy-focused, six-month program for librarians to teach them the skills necessary to thrive as privacy ad, excuse me, privacy advocates." Uh, "From installing privacy software to influencing public policy." Uh, the program, it's new this year with its inaugural course beginning in June. Uh, it's now accepting applications for the, for the first cohort of librarians and I want to suggest to the board um that the AADL circulate the application, encourage library staff to apply and ideally have somebody join for the cohort. Um, the application, application deadline is soon, library, uh, February 1st for the uh Library Freedom Initiative. So, action would need to be taken like before the next board meeting. Um, I've printed out a few copies of the application and the announcement that I read, uh, which both have additional info about the program, but briefly, there's no cost. Uh, it's an expected load of five hours per week for six months uh, with a cohort of 40 privacy advocates geographically dispersed across the US. Um, and in addition, the Library Freedom Project is available for, you know, contact if you have any questions about it. I can also circulate and provide specific references, you know, if you have any requests. Uh, I understand there's no dialogue at these comments, so I'd like to request that the board provide a public response and writing on the website. Um, but again, I hope you circulate uh the application. I encourage, I, I hope you encourage staff to apply. Uh, I believe we have an awesome library and I think participating in this program would make it even awesomer. No, that's not a word. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Very cool. Thank you very much for sharing that with us. Wait, any, anyone else? Karen? Okay. Thank you. Okay, any further comments?